Call or roll? Mute that. That delays.
When I get into a phone conversation like that, I'm like, oh.
Mr. Griffin?
Present.
Dr. Matusek?
Here.
Mr. Simrod?
Here.
Mr. Lau?
Present.
Mrs. Charmison?
Here.
Welcome to all those in attendance and online as well. Nobody had signed up for public comments. I'm not going to let any of y'all talk that are in this room. Are we doing item number three? I see none present, that's why.
No, so the principals couldn't be here tonight, so we're going to wait till March. We'll go ahead and recognize those teachers. You have Flo Conway at the Early Childhood Center and Upper Elementary, both. Shelley Rapp at the Middle School and Kim Wrights at the High School. And Kim was also our District Teacher of the Year. But like I said, they'll be here where the principals can brag on them a little bit more than just a name recognition next month.
Okay.
Yep.
The consent agenda begins 4.1. Very extensive, all the way through 4.3. Any of you all need anything pulled out for further discussion or have any comments or questions therein?
I have none.
Seeing none, I will move to approve the consent agenda as posted.
Second?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Dr. Matusek?
Yes.
Mr. Simrod?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mrs. Charmison?
Yes.
Item 5.1, under Regular Business, is the presentation by Brightwell.
On.
Regarding the solar panel installation. Your table this way. No, because we need to see you. You always have it. Pull your table that way.
We're good.
The arc. Just move your table just a little bit so I can make, so I can see you when I'm talking to you. You don't care if you're on camera or not. I can see your microphone unless you have a question.
Okay, Tony?
Hey, Tony?
Yes, yes.
All right, I think everybody ready to go?
Ready to go.
All right. I sent the information in a board packet to the members, so they've had a chance to review it. But please, I just want to leave this to be your opportunity to let us know what's going on. What's going on?
Sounds perfect. I'm going to share my screen, if that's okay? Can you all see that okay?
Yes, yes.
All right. Jason, thank you for having us. Thank you to the board for having us today. I know you have the information. I'm going to quickly walk through what Brightwell is doing and our projects and walk through Hennessy's, which is a great project. We've been working with schools. Norman was the first. Dover, Millwood, a lot of others around the state have started using this program. Our goal is to try to put a lot of dollars back to schools that are otherwise going to utilities. And how it works is, I think you all kind of walked through it a little bit. We deploy solar on projects such as yours that are really great solar projects. With Impact Capital, we've got a lot of it that really likes to invest in schools. And the benefit to the school is it can go solar without deploying capital, without bonding. And we've got a couple of terms that we think will work really well for Hennessy. Part of the real big benefit in these products that we're putting on are 30-year performance-warranted panels. And so that's been a big question for our school districts, how long does solar last? The panels we're putting on are going to last under warranty for 30 years. And then after that, they still have a couple of decades of life left on them. So we get really excited to power schools and affect, hopefully, well beyond all of us as we put money back into classrooms. So I believe you all have seen this, but Matt Hold is also on the call. Has been to your buildings and designed several solar panel projects. These are the buildings that we've designed them for. Very clean installs, simple installs. We worked with your facilities and understand how we'd interconnect, how we'd place the panels on the projects. The panels are warranted for hail and actually protect your roofs. They're mounted so that they can deal with 100-year wind loads. And so there's four buildings we'd be putting solar panels on. You all are currently with OG&E. And OG&E is a great energy provider for solar. They've got a great interconnection agreement. In this situation, we'd be offsetting around 67% of the energy for Hennessy on these projects. So we typically don't try to save all the way up to 100% of energy because then the economics don't make as good of sense. In this situation, though, it's an incredible solar project, 928 panels on the four buildings. And we are putting a domestic panel on your roof. All the panels we get are US-made. So I'm going to jump in to the analysis. Jason, I'll stop for. Go ahead. Yeah.
Tony, you might add. We, Jason, since we talked last, we did add the auditorium to this proposal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Scott, the auditorium. So we've got a couple scenarios here with Brightwell. We tried to, when we talked with Jason, we were trying to maximize the savings for Hennessy over the term. So I'm going to walk through this part. Today, on these four buildings, Hennessy pays $107,737 annually. We got that by getting your utility bills and running it through our process. When we install solar, your utility bill with OG&E will drop to $46,000. So you will still pay OG&E, you'll still be connected. OG&E is going to act like a big battery for us, and they're still going to charge for a portion of your energy. That being said, the difference between the 107 you're paying today and the 46 you'll pay tomorrow is $61,690 in savings. So how Brightwell works is we install the entire system, engineer it, everything. Hennessy pays absolutely nothing for that installation. Instead, you start making a payment to Brightwell instead of OG&E for this portion of your energy. In this situation, it's a 20-year term. And so year one, you would save 3% on your energy. So it's kind of like if OG&E were to come in and say, we want to discount your energy 3%, lock in the increases going forward to 1.5% versus we've been averaging close to 5, 3.8 is the average, but we're dropping it to 1.5% increase for Hennessy. And then at the end of 20 years, we'll give you the system. And that's why we really like this 20-year service agreement. This Energy Management Service Agreement is what Hennessy would enter into. It's kind of like buying third-party gases, except this is buying electric. While we own the panels, there's zero insurance. So if you're, you know, going through O-SIG, there's no insurance requirement. It's completely taken care of by us. All maintenance is taken care of by us. There's not a lot of maintenance, but we do monitor it 365 days a year and come on site once a year to ensure the system's proper functioning because we're guaranteeing energy in this service agreement to Hennessy. So Hennessy starts saving money year one, and then progressively, because we don't increase as much as OG&E, you save over the first 20 years. And then in the 21st year, we're going to turn the system over to Hennessy. So that's where the real savings start stacking up. In addition, Hennessy will then own the panels, so they'll be your property. We estimate property insurance year 21 at a very high third-party rate. We're just trying to put a plug in here to ensure there's no surprises in the future. If you're going through O-SIG or another carrier, the price will be about a fifth of that price, but we'd rather budget it high. And so Hennessy would then own the panels and get all the benefit from that energy. And they would save $1.7 million over the life. So this is a scenario where, and by the way, that's over the warranted life. I think it's really important again to reiterate, a 60,000-mile warranty on a car, that car can still be driven 100 or 120 or 150 miles, 1,000 miles. In the same situation here, you're still going to be producing energy. These panels are going to be of 85% in year 30. So very strong performance warranty from these panels. And so to kind of recap, this 20-year, what we liked about it is after 20 years, Hennessy gets the system with no capital upfront. I'll show one more. This is a 25-year. Kind of think of it like a 30-year mortgage compared to a 15. You're going to see the payments go down year one, so you could save more this year and save a little less over time. And it doesn't matter to us which one you all would rather do. This one would save 10% year one, so your cash flow goes up. The difference is this lasts for 25 years instead of 20. So you still get the panels at the end of 25 years. This total would be close to 1.45 million versus the 1.7. So I'll stop there, Jason. I know you all have had a chance to look at it, and I'd love to answer any questions about the panels, the program, anything about this.
Would you explain the panels? They do not, they do not void the roof warranty, correct? Warranty correct.
That's correct. There's not going to be any roof warranty. We've done over 800 installs. We've never had a roof warranty that's, we talked to the roofers beforehand. Matt likes to call this a touchless system. On several of your roofs, we're going to put ballasted systems where we put a membrane underneath a ballast tray, and we don't even touch the roof. So that's the ballasted system. The other ones, we're going to put, I'll show you real quick. An attachment. A solar foot here in the same way. We're not going to avoid any warranty. We worked through the way we attach these with the roofer, and there's zero roof warranties that are going to be avoided. We're very particular on those.
And would you explain how they're funded?
Yes. So I'll come back to this slide. We have a lot of impact capital that funds all of our Brightwell projects. And again, kind of back to our goal, we have a mission to unlock millions of dollars of additional funds back to schools. Homeless shelters, we've done the regional food bank. We're just installing the state. We've done homeless shelters. We do a lot of public schools. Our capital buys these panels, and we do projects for nonprofits. So again, public schools, nonprofits, charities, churches, universities. And we have people that really like to buy the panels for these projects because they get tax credits and depreciation, and they get returned for a period of time back from the organizations. And then they really look at the impact they're going to make. So in this situation, they're going to be putting 1.5 to 1.7 million back into Hennessy. So it's a big deal to our folks. Public schools go the fastest. We have a marketplace, things like the zoo and, you know, food banks and museums. But public schools go the fastest because people love education. So yeah, that's a, that's kind of a summary of how the project's funded.
On the original proposal, you just have the panels over the, can they hear me? The original proposal, there's a carbon reduction of 482 tons. Since you added the auditorium, I'm assuming that would go up. It says 482 tons. Is that the life of it? Is that a yearly carbon reduction? And who gets the carbon capture credits on that?
That's a great question. If you all want the carbon capture credits, we can retire them to Hennessy. Sometimes we have other people take the credits, but for the most part, we don't broker those. So this is for the life of the project, sorry, reduced annually of this solar project. The total, yeah, it's annually. But if the rack is something Hennessy wants, absolutely, we can retire that for you all.
What about hazardous material disposal when a panel goes bad or after 35 years, whatever? Is there, is there excess disposal fees for hazardous material of solar panels?
If you're all are talking or if you have another question?
Sorry about that.
I was, I was asking about hazardous material disposal. If after 25 or 35 years and they have to be disposed of, is there a greater disposal fee and a more stricter issue with hazardous material disposal on solar panels?
That's a great question. These won't, they'll be at above 85% year 30, so we're talking roughly in 50 years. You might be looking at a degradation into the 60s where you might say, let's retire these panels. So that's about 2075. There's a lot of recycle programs right now. There'll be a lot more by 2065 and 2075. There's actually not as much hazardous material in new technology as there used to be in old, and the recycle programs are numerous. So that's something we're really confident that there's a lot of plans. It's just the plan that you're going to use is different than the plans that are available today.
Hey, Tony, can you go through the numbers again?
Sure thing.
Just starting off on like a 20-year? 20-year?
Yeah, for sure. And for the other gentleman that asked the question, they do have access to the types of panels. These are going to be Sylfab, based out of Washington State, South Carolina. The data sheets are in here as well for you all to look at. There's some really clean solar panels. All right, I'm going to jump back to the numbers. So I'm going to go back to the 20-year first. Today, Hennessy pays OG&E $107,000 based off the last 12 months of energy bills that we were provided. If we were to put solar panels on and run out your billing cycle for that 12 months, you would have paid $46,047. So the savings for these solar panels is $61,690. So that's what your bill is going to grow. So I'm going to focus on that for a second. So you're not going to pay the 61, you're still going to pay OG&E the 46. So instead of paying OG&E $61,690, we're going to discount you the first year, and we're going to bill you in quarterly installments of a little less than $15,000. You're going to pay no insurance, so your annual cash flow will immediately be positive. Not a lot, but positive. The important part is the plan that's ahead of you, which is hedges your increase to 1.5%. So you're hedging your energy increase every year. During this 20 years, you pay no insurance, no maintenance, and you're guaranteed energy production. That's why we monitor it, service it, are producing. At the end of 20 years, the panels are going to be divested and given to Hennessy. So that's the 20th year. A couple of things to note here that make it conservative. I'll walk through that again. Two things. This $16,326 we have booked here for year 21, that's the insurance cost that we're plugging. That's a third-party insurance cost. If you go through O-SIG, it would be less than a fifth of that. But we're just trying to plug a really high number to give our school systems a conservative view of the future. So if you had to get third-party insurance, or if you decided you wanted third-party insurance, it would be a plug. The other number that's in here is this weird $1,750. Why do we plug that flat for the next 10 years? In the contract with Hennessy, the service agreement, Energy Management Service Agreement, it says after 20 years, the investment will cost you all $1,750. If we wrote zero there, it looks like a donation. When we write $1,750, it's covering the cost of our QuickBooks, K1s, and accounting fees. We don't want, no one wants to hold an asset for no gain. So the intent then is to divest the asset to Hennessy. The benefit of this is we still run the model out as if you got your energy from a third party for the last 10 years for $1,700, which is still a great deal. But in reality, you're going to get that system handed back to Hennessy and not pay anything year 21 through 30. At the end of 30 years, again, you just own the system outright, and it's going to produce into the future for a couple decades.
So the numbers he's got there are not the same numbers as you gave us earlier, are they?
They, they have an auditorium, that is correct.
So he's got, he's got different numbers.
He's got an updated numbers because the numbers he originally went over with me, that I just paraphrased in the email, that did not include auditorium, that is correct.
Did it include elementary, middle school? I mean, there's only a picture of the high school.
Yes, the original numbers included three projects. This one includes the fourth that we added the auditorium. Sorry, I didn't get that update to the board packet.
So can I get you to tell me again what the annual service rate is going to be on this?
Annual service rate? Annual service rate?
Yeah, sure. So the Energy Management Service Agreement is going to functionally be 3% less than your utility savings year one. So instead of paying monthly to OG&E the $61,000, you're going to pay us quarterly $59,840. And we do give you all a dashboard to track that monthly. And another thing we give to our schools that they really like is an impact dashboard. This is going to be branded for Hennessy in your colors, and you can correlate it to a stat you all want to put in a lobby. Kids love it, stakeholders love it. You can put it in the administration building for all four buildings. Any iPad, any TV, we can promote what's going on on your buildings. But yeah, the overall service agreement is, on this 20-year, it's this $59,840 going up at 1.5% for 20 years. The other option is the 25-year, and it would lower the payment 10% off of where you're at today. So it would drop your OG&E price 10%, and it only raises it 1.5%, but it goes for 20 years, 25 years. We also could do a 30-year option and lower it even more year one. Schools are varying on what they choose. Right now, about 70% are choosing the shortest term, and there's still some that would rather the longer term because they want lower cost year one. And we're, we try to do whatever the school more wants.
Will you make sure to send me a copy of the updated numbers and everything that way I can share with board members? Anybody else that asks?
Absolutely. I'll send you this sheet right here. I'm showing the board so they'll have it. Literally, you all will have this right here where you can flip through the projects. You can see the carbon offset, you can see the equipment. And then when you click on this analysis page, you can choose the 20 or 25-year. And then you scroll down and you can see the cash flows. I'll also update that four-page board pack for you all, Jason.
Okay.
On the 20-year documents, you guys can have either one you want.
Anybody else?
Tony, I'm sure I'll be in touch with you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Yeah, the last thing I'll say real quick is at the end of this, we, once you all say we like this project, you would pick the service agreement, Jason, that the board you want, then we would fund the project. And it takes roughly four to five months from permitting, engineering, ordering equipment to install, and we work with you on that. But we'd be installing, you know, late spring, early summer at this point, if you all decided to go. So thank you all for the time. We really appreciate it. It's been great to do Dover's project. We're going to celebrate them next week on their ribbon cutting. We look forward to doing a project with you in the near future.
All right. Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Tony.
Let's leave that picture up there.
So I'll get that new packet of information to you and get plenty of time to ask around, and I'm sure you will have tons of questions. So I'll just send that to Tony all the time and get back and forth, and I'll get all that to the media as well, and you guys can look through that as well.
Moving on, do we need to address 5.2? That's where the upcoming special meeting is. Do we?
No, not 5.2, just 5.3.
Just want to go to 5.3?
Yeah.
Yes.
No action on 5.2, 5.3. Calling for a board meeting on March the 5th, 2025, at 12:00 PM to determine the maturities of the Eagle Event Center and the sale of $1.7 million in taxable building bonds. I just jumped off of that. I move to approve that resolution.
Second?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Dr. Matusek?
Yes.
Mr. Simrod?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mrs. Charmison?
Yes.
Is there new business that has presented itself since this was posted? Then we'll move to your facilities or superintendent's report.
Real quick on the facilities, all I have on the house here, Nathan has deeded that to us. We're going to deliver payment to him tomorrow. His guys have taken everything out, the sheet rock, the mud and everything with asbestos. I did talk with Brandon Scott a little bit. He's going to get back. He's visiting with the city. But they would be interested in possibly doing some sort of trainings in there before it's demolished. And he knows we want to get it demolished as soon as possible, that way, you know, kids don't go in and get hurt or whatever. But so they're worried of that, but he's going to, he's going to talk to the city. So you may see firefighters getting to utilize that before it comes down. So I told him that'd be great, we could partner on that a little bit. That's all I have on facilities. Resignations, one resignation, Mary Beth Butler. And that is all I have.
Seeing no questions on that, we'll move to 8.1, and I will move to enter into executive session.
Second?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Dr. Matusek?
Yes.
Mr. Simrod?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mrs. Charmison?
Yes.
Acknowledged, return to open session. We entered into executive session 7:28 and returned at 7:51. All board members were present, including Superintendent Jason Sternberger and Board Member-elect Lance Painter. No votes were taken, only the agenda items were discussed. Moving to 8.3, and that regards the employment of the following administrators for 2025, 2026. Mark Cox, Stacy Mack, Barry Crosslight, Ricardo Torango, and Joshua Faulkner.
I'll directly get to the board then.
I will move to approve.
Second?
Their employment.
Who said second? Was that Luke?
Luke.
That was Luke.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Dr. Matusek?
Yes.
Mr. Simrod?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mrs. Charmison?
Yes.
8.3 regards the employment of support staff, bus monitor for the remainder of this school year.
I'd recommend to the board to employ Christina Gonzalez-Dearoman as bus monitor.
So move.
Second?
Luke?
Mr. Griffin?
I'd like to.
Yes.
Dr. Matusek?
Yes.
Mr. Simrod?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mrs. Charmison?
Yes.
8.4 regards extra duty assignment of, well, you can recommend for speech and debate.
I'd recommend to the board that we hire Jennifer Ollery for the remainder of the year for $500. year for $500.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Dr. Matusik?
Yes.
Mr. Simran?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mrs. Charmison?
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Dakota made the minutes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Dr. Matusik?
Yes.
Mr. Simran?
Yes.
Mr. Lau?
Aye.
Mrs. Charmison?